Okay. So I will call to order the town of Stonington Sustainability Committee Zoom special meeting of October 12th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And so we'll call Alexis Khan present.
Chris, who was present?
And I will just mention that John Lindsay and Pat Turner are unable to attend this evening. And so I see Casey and Chris, would you like to introduce yourselves?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Good. I'm going to be eating dinner, so that's why. But I do miss it. And I have tape over my thing, so that's why it looks funny. But um yeah, hi Craig.
Hi.
Craig invited me.
Oh, great.
Yeah. Yeah. So thanks for having me. Yeah.
And are you, you're, you're interested in potentially becoming a sustainability committee member and just want to see what the, what the gig is?
Yeah.
Great. No, glad to have you. And as you can see, it's quite a small group, especially tonight. So I, you know, this is not representative of the full group, but thank you for joining me. I think Craig might have mentioned that Chula Balasrati was on our committee and she now will not be able to attend just because of the fact that she's running for selectmen or selectwoman, I should say. So that's, so we lost a member and certainly just wanting to grow the membership anyway. But that's part of the reason why we're so particularly small at this moment.
Okay.
Well, welcome. Thanks for joining and you can certainly feel free to turn off your camera and have your dinner.
Good, because my husband just served. All right, but I'm gonna be here. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
And Chris, would you like to introduce yourself?
Okay, I was looking for the button. Yeah, my name is Chris, Chris Oss and North Stonington resident, just sitting in.
Wonderful. And are you interested in joining Chris, the Sustainability Committee, or you're just listening in as a public attendee?
Public attendee.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, well, I will share my screen and start the agenda. So the first item, and I guess this is going to be, yeah, we can't vote on this. So it was to decide upon a new committee secretary, but I feel like again, my knowledge of the rules is not so crystal clear, but I believe that we need to hold off until we have a quorum, right?
I think so. I think so. I mean, I think, yeah, if we just get to number three, I think the next thing we need to do is just sort of build some stamina. So we get some heads to do some, some positive work.
Right. Admitted somebody else, let me maybe back up and see if you'd like to introduce yourself. I see that Ariana, you just joined. We were just going through who's on the call. I was wondering if you'd like to introduce yourself? I think you're on mute, Ariana. Okay, we can always go back to you if you'd like to introduce yourself later. Just feel free to chime in. It looks like you're on mute and I asked to unmute, but I don't know if you see that indication on your Zoom screen in terms of how to unmute yourself if you'd like to introduce yourself. Oh, she.
Is that a wave?
I, I don't think, guys. Are you able to unmute yourself? Or maybe in the chat, you could write something because it looks like you're putting your hand up to say something? Okay, we'll come, we'll come back. So new members discussion, so Craig, you kindly invited Casey to join. So otherwise, I'm not aware of anybody else who has been an interested party. But thank you for inviting new membership opportunities. Sorry. There keeps being somebody who tries to come in and then they come in and come out. So I'm trying to admit them. The, I think we were, there's no meeting minutes. I think we reviewed all of them the last time. That's just kind of a standing agenda item, but I don't think we have anything to review today. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the Antoinette, the town clerk, had sent out an email regarding starting to schedule the 2022. If we wanted to set it up as a regular meeting schedule, we've been doing the special meetings largely because, you know, we started all the way through part of the kind of year. So Mike Ergo's recommendation was just continue to do it as special meetings. And then, you know, for the next year to kind of, if you wanted, wanted to just set up a regular meeting schedule. So we have to start planning that because I guess they want to make sure that there's not too many conflicts between different committees that meet with the town. So I, I, I think it's kind of hard to discuss without everybody, but I know that Tuesday at seven is kind of a standing time that's best for you. Is that true, Craig? For 2022 as well?
I mean, within my capacity to think that far ahead, it's pretty good. But you know, like, if Tuesdays are not good for you, then we can, we can explore options.
It's okay. I figured out kind of how to move things around, I think, I think. I'll see how it goes. But I think I managed to change things around. So I'll, I'll stick with the Tuesday at 7:00 PM. For 2022, again, we can't vote on this really right now, but like, do you have a preference for? I know we talked about sort of getting some momentum with every two weeks and then maybe moving to once a month or something of a not as regular, you know, not as high a frequency of the meetings. Do you have a preference when it comes to every continuing every two weeks or going more like once a month if it's going to be a regular meeting schedule?
So I guess my question is regarding regular meetings versus special meetings. So is it just a matter that a regular meeting means that it is preordained to be at the same time every XX instead of this whole like have to decide all the time, right? So I mean, what if put in for monthly meetings?
Okay.
For 2022, and then we can always drop in special meetings for whenever that's.
I think that's a good plan. I like that plan. And I, my understanding is that there's also, I'm sure there's a lot more rules that I'm unaware of or haven't paid close enough attention to admittedly, but I do know that there's different rules when it comes to whether it's a special meeting or a regular meeting as with regard to how soon the agenda can be posted. But the other thing is the agenda for a regular meeting can be, my understanding is that it doesn't have, you don't have to follow the agenda precisely as you do with a special meeting. It's sort of a little bit, you know, you can have a standing agenda and then add new items and that kind of thing. But if it's.
That's good. Flexibility is good, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that sounds like a plan. Then wanted to kind of revisit, I know this might be short again, discussion, given that we don't have everybody here. But whether there are other initiatives that you, you know, kind of last time we talked about the EverSource Energy Audit, not doing it under their stipulations, but maybe kind of doing our own version. Curious if you had any other further thoughts about that. Sorry. Or new things that you wanted to kind of look to the committee to undertake as we go forward?
Yeah, I ended up talking one more time to the woman who is running that program. And we both sort of decided that it was, it didn't really fit what we were trying to do. So, so that's that. I mean, there is still available. I mean, you know, I sort of back into that because I just happened to find it. It's something that we could certainly pursue. There are, there are still some programs within EverSource where I imagine, you know, it's something as simple as putting a flyer together that we have on like the wall of flyers at Town Hall and getting it on our website, the town website and just, you know, doing some pushes. Whether or not that is enough to fit one of the sort of point recognition things, I'm not positive.
Well, I think it's, I get, you know, obviously because of the past three years of sort of working on Sustainable CT, you know, I'm thinking of everything in terms of like fitting it to one of their subactions. But you know, that's not really the overall goal. The overall goal is to move forward, you know, how the town is from sustainability standpoint. So I would say even if it doesn't, even if we get zero credit for it from a sustainable CT standpoint, that's not the most important part.
Casey, can you, can you do like a sustainable CT 101 since it's your, your sort of wheelhouse for Casey to hear? Like what we've been talking in circles around for the past, not, that's, that's, that's.
No, and I was actually just trying to log in to, that's a, it's a really good segue to show you kind of around the portal and what qualifies for basically Sustainable CT is this program that we as a, now of course, I can't remember my password. That we as a town, I think in 2019, the town had become aware of this program through, I believe, CCOG or some sort of organization. And basically Sustainable CT is a new, sort of like a pseudo nonprofit kind of governmental organization type thing. I think they're funded, gosh, I should, I should know this better, but I think they're partially funded by Yukon. And essentially it's a body that is trying to enhance the sustainability as measured by all these different criterias for the different towns of Connecticut. So you apply to this very comprehensive application every year. And based on your answers and based on whether you're getting, you know, enough points in all of these different myriad categories, you can get certified at a certain level. So so far they have bronze and silver. We applied in 2019 and got bronze, which was a big undertaking and big accolade considering it was, you know, their first year for applying. Last year we got recertified for bronze and this year we are going for silver, hoping that we get it. There's no gold yet. They're kind of like, because it's such a new organization and a new certification process, they're trying to kind of grow as the towns progress and become more advanced in their sustainability. I think the eventual goal is for them to add another layer. But there's a lot of different benefits to Sustainable CT besides just kind of, you know, way that Mike Ergo is explaining his interest in involving himself is that, you know, the town does a lot in the, you know, when you think about like the solar installations on all town building roofs and, you know, there's a lot that the town does supporting local businesses and, you know, farmers and that kind of thing. But it's just, it's difficult to necessarily kind of rally around everything that we do because it's so disparate in a lot of ways. Because you know, maybe there's Hewitt Farm Committee that does certain things and maybe there's, you know, you know, there's all these different committees and all these different individuals within town that are doing things. Like for example, the pollinator pathways, but that was kind of spearheaded by the garden club and Pat Turner. And, you know, that wasn't necessarily in a consolidated way. So this is a way for us to really show the impact that we're having on a holistic basis. And so then this parlayed it into establishing a sustainability committee that would kind of have as our mission, A, being sort of instrumental in putting together the application for Sustainable CT, but more broadly, being the body responsible for kind of driving sustainability forward within the town. So it's not just trying to kind of check the boxes when we come to the certification process, but be more forward thinking about, okay, instead of just like, we get to the Sustainable CT application time period and we're just trying to see like, what did we do that we can get credit for? And with the Sustainability Committee instead, what we're trying to do is we're doing all of these things in a very deliberate manner. And then it just so happens that, oh, wow, we're going to get, you know, this will give us credit towards Sustainable CT certification, rather than it being just like, ah, we're going to try to figure out what we already did and see if we can get credit for it. So much more, I would say proactive rather than reactive. The benefits to getting the certification, besides the fact that, you know, it's kind of an accolade that gets you, you know, for potential people that are coming to live in a certain community that might be really interested in sustainability to know that they're living in a, you know, that they're moving or living in a Sustainable CT certified town, but also their grant opportunities. So there's a lot of flexibility when it comes to matching grant programs, like you can basically apply for them from in many, many, many different areas. And so there's a nice kind of money behind what they, what you get as a benefit for being a Sustainable CT member. Is that kind of a good explanation, Craig? Anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that's great. I think that's great. I mean, yeah, there's all these Ts to cross and Is to dot and it's good structure for, for, I mean, we're, right now we're using it as ideas to sort of move forward. Because, I mean, for me, the notion of sustainability is this sort of like nebulous effect, how I think. But what do we do for, for real change, especially within, you know, on a community level? And this is a way to sort of branch those things a little bit.
And I will say there's a lot of things where we know that, you know, it's really geared towards larger towns that are more, for example, there's a whole portion on public transportation, like, well, not really going to get very much in the way of public transportation in the town of North Stonington. So, you know, it's, it's not applicable in every way, but what I have really liked about the, and I'm sorry, I can pull up the spreadsheet without logging in. Um, what I have liked about the way that it's the different actions are structured is that it's, when I first saw it, I remember thinking like, oh, this is not what I thought of as sustainability, like there's an arts and culture section and there's equity. And there's all this stuff that's not what I, you know, I thought of sustainability as like, we're not wasting water and we're using, you know, renewable energy and it has all these broader reaching elements to it that I think is actually makes it more, we can get potentially people who have different interests that are, there's something for everybody, basically, is the way that I, that I think of it because it's so broad reaching. Let me pull up the spreadsheets.
Yeah, I think that's a really important component is in that, you know, yes, it's about saving water, but also sustainability is something greater than that. And it really means sort of a knit, connected community of diverse people who are thinking on a broader level about how they are, how they engage with each other and how they engage with their resources and how they engage with the land and all the things.
Exactly. No, that's a really good explanation of it. Thank you. I.
That's what we're trying to do. I pulled up, I pulled up the spreadsheet. I'm just, I'm just, just as an example, the Community Energy Campaign, there's three parts. Identify a target, a target audience on which to focus your energy campaign. Select or design a campaign to educate your audience about available programs that encourage implementation of energy efficiency measures designed for that audience. And C, carry it out. So, you know, yes, there are three parts, but it's all sort of implied. It's nonspecific. And yeah, I mean, that could mean anything. So I think we can make it mean what we want it to mean. And then flush out the, the write-up to make it sound like it fits these things later.
Yeah, that's, sorry, I just, I figured it out again. So I will, so here's the act. So yeah, that, that's your, that's a good point. So it sounds like we could do something that's kind of not on the level of EverSource that would still help us get credit for Sustainable CT. But did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, or, you know, using, using some ever sourced resources that are available for local towns without trying to create this like giant program that needs thousands of dollars that we need to apply for a grant for.
Right. So what would you say if we do something kind of on our level without the EverSource program? What would you say are kind of our next steps? To get something like that? Because I know, I think when we were talking last time is that EverSource provides these energy audits as like a lot of times for free, right? Just a citizen of the town?
Either, either for free or for reduced cost depending on the situation. Because it's, EverSource has the program, but it's like third-party contractors really that do the work. I know when I did mine, I had bought my house, I had paid for a home inspection. And as part of the home inspection after I moved in, it was included and I didn't have to pay it. So I think it depends case by case, but I think what I can do as a next step, if we sort of put aside that, again, that, that big extensive program is just reach out and see maybe what kind of resources, because the program wasn't through EverSource. It was this sort of umbrella organization.
Okay.
Those say with it, that was multi-state, but even just reaching out to EverSource and seeing what specific community outreach, support tool type things they have that are going to be already sort of put together. Because, you know, they're motivated, expand the program too.
I see. Okay. Yeah, that would be, and I'm wondering if, do you think it makes sense to, like, if it's something that, as you said, is subsidized in some cases? So, you know, there might be costs associated, but it might be a lot less than, you know, market price. I'm wondering if we, would it make sense for, do you think for us to talk to Abe about maybe seeing if we could do another grant match for, you know, raising some funds so that we could, if somebody wanted to sign up for an audit and it was going to cost something, that we could pay for it through the grant match?
That would be a real, that's a really good idea. Yeah.
I'll reach out to Abe and see if we could just chat with him about that. I'll set up a time, but maybe if we can, before we talk to him, maybe have, you know, more information if possible about like what we would use as resources to promote it. And then also, is there, is there a name of the organization that like we could ask them about what the price, the cost is if they were to do it? For the individual home?
So there's a, I'm not sure if I'm going to find it right now, but there is a list of third-party contracts that are certified to do it. So what I'll do is I'll reach out to EverSource and see if I can talk to someone in the community outreach program there. And I'll also maybe just do like a cold call of one or two contractors, just to see what someone's experience would be like if they just wanted to get one done.
Right. Yeah, because I wonder if for people that, you know, maybe wouldn't be inclined to do it if it were their out-of-pocket money, that that's what we could use the grants for is to basically pay for those people that you can't afford it or they just wouldn't do it otherwise.
Yep.
Okay. That sounds like a good next step if you agree.
I do agree. Yeah, it sounds good.
Okay. Anything else on, oh, so sorry, Casey, for your benefit, essentially, there's all these different categories. And I collapsed this again, but there's, I think it was up to, let's see, 13 categories. It was 10 last year. But they include inclusive and equitable community impacts, thriving local economy. So that's basically a lot of, you know, promoting local retailers and sustainable purchasing and that kind of thing. Well-studied lands and natural resources, vibrant and creative cultural ecosystems. So the, just for reference, had, had on our last meeting, Laura Tillinghast joined us to talk a little bit about, she's looking into kind of a cultural coalition type thing for the town of North Stonington to have some kind of a local town arts and culture committee or organization or something to kind of get that. So that would, you know, that's a perfect tie-in to this area of, this kind of what I alluded to earlier, where there's, there's kind of like something in it for everybody. Dynamic and resilient planning, conservation and development, that kind of thing, climate vulnerability. There's also a lot on historic resources and preservation of the town's historic resources. Clean and diverse transportation systems. So that's what I was saying, like, some of this was about like sidewalks and parking management and smart commuting, stuff that we don't really have in the town. But, you know, there's some, there's always something you can do. Renewable and efficient, efficient energy infrastructure, inclusive engagement, communication, education. This is a lot about making sure that people in town feel, you know, engaged and that they have a voice that we're collaborating with other municipalities on sustainable sustainability efforts. Strategic materials. Oh, I think this was the section, yeah, a lot about, you know, whether we provide, and this actually might be a very good segue into one of the next topics, but you know, whether we provide different ways to compost, you know, on a town level or recycle particular, you know, food scraps and things like that. Optimal health and wellness, so encouraging sustainable food networks, conducting health impact assessments, air quality. I think one in here, there was something about dark sky, might have been another one in this category. There's a lot on affordable housing. So as you see, you know, it's not just sort of like what you typically think of as sustainability, affordable, affordable housing, homelessness prevention. And then you have the ability to kind of like create your own. So it's something that is unique to the town that we think fits within the umbrella of sustainability. So these are kind of all the general categories and try to, you know, kind of, again, use this as a guide, not to have it be, I always think of it as almost like teaching to a test. I'm not a teacher, but you know what I mean? Like we're, you're always just trying to do things because you know they're going to get credit for it, but rather that we do things that we think are great for our community. And if it, if we get credit for it, that's great. But if we don't, then, you know, we just did something great. That doesn't matter that it, you got credit for it. Any questions, Casey? Is that seem clear? Do you have any questions on that?
No, it seems clear. My husband's actually sitting next to me on his iPad on the sustainability website.
Oh, great.
He made a good point. He said, hey, you should have a link on the North Stonington ct.gov site to this sustainable website.
So interestingly enough, that is, we have the, oh gosh, what's it, I think it's Russell. I always forget his name. This is so terrible. But the IT person in the town has created a website dedicated to sustainability for North Stonington. Sustainable North Stonington. So the idea, I just emailed him. So I can't believe I'm forgetting his name, but I've dealt with a lot of people today. And he developed a website for us that we are kind of cultivating, or I should say curating. I'm jumping around. This is sort of a Sustainable North Stonington update. So the idea, I can pull it up probably, is that this is kind of the town page, but to have our own dedicated page that we kind of populate with ideas and updates and resources and for people that are interested in sustainability, they can visit this website and kind of get updates on what we're thinking about and what we're, you know, what's on our minds and where we can send. where we can send people for different recommendations. So, um, that does have, let me see if I can find it. We're kind of populating it now before it's, um, it's, it's live, but it's just not very, I, I emailed him some things to add to it. Um, so I think he'll be updating that this week. But the idea is that, you know, um, different projects, so like, for example, if we get this, um, energy audit underway, we would put it under like the projects that we're currently, um, endeavoring as a group. Um, and then there's this, uh, um, information on the sustainable CT certification process. Um, and then their match fund and, um, you know, other things. So I think the idea was once we had it a little bit more populated, to have a link on the sustainability committee's website. Right now, it's just sort of like not enough on it. Um, and then that sustainable North Stonington does have, um, uh, information about sustainable CT, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it looks good so far.
Need it to be a lot meatier, um, which is what I was asking him to add, um, but then hopefully, once we have a little bit more content, then it will make sense to link back to the sustainability committee on the town's website.
Yeah.
I was going to ask you actually regarding the, um, is it, if we wanted to throw something on once it's kind of going like, you know, I'm just always like reading articles about things and sometimes it's either directly or tangentially related to sustainable things and it'd be cool just to have, you know, like that. So, so for example, I just read this interesting article from, in the Atlantic about what happens when you return stuff that you buy online? And how goes back, like if you buy a pair of jeans, you don't like them, send it back. Those jeans are probably not going to go to someone else who wants a pair of new jeans.
Right, right.
Never really thought, buying so much stuff online, right?
Right.
And it was like this, huh, like I just, I just never thought about it. And that's a good thing to think about.
Yeah.
I was going to tell you, where does, where can I, to, to the, this guy, this un- unnamed man?
Yeah, sorry, his last name is Russell. That's why I was thinking, um, I thought of, I said Russell, and I thought maybe that's his first name. It's his, um, his first name is James Russell, and I think I, um, I'll resend it out. I think I provided his email address, um, to the group that I can re, I can resend it. And so he can, um, he's the one who actually, like, we won't have access to the backend to be able to edit the site. Um, but you can just send him stuff and say, can you post this on, um, for example, like, can you post this on resources or tip of the week or something like that? And he can put it right on there.
There it is.
Russell.
Yeah, I know that you gave me.
Sorry?
Jay Russell at North Stonington. I found it.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so if you want to feel free to send, because I'm, I think at one point we were talking about having, I think we had had some discussions about, well, should everybody send it to me? And then I said, but I feel like unless you disagree, I don't need to be the moderator of the content, like, you know, any, anybody can, and our group can just send it. And then it just prevents probably a delay of if I don't see it immediately. That sounds like a really interesting article though. It's, there's so many repercussions of things that you don't even think about until somebody points it out. Um, the next item I just wanted to mention, so I think I put it out to the group. I, I'm going to check with Mike and Christine, because I think they're going to have somebody involved, um, as well. Really like a town initiative is that too, but, um, and I think, oh, she's, she's CC, did you receive this email from somebody named Emmy Emma Pearson? Um, from, and regarding SSN climate planning and technical assistance cohort introductory meeting? I think you did. Because it's on the fourteen.
Yeah, I was like in the afternoon on the fourteen, right, yes, um, I'm seeing patients.
That's what I, I think it looks like John might be trying to attend.
Yeah, he said he could be able to, and who knows if he'll be able to, but I think if, he said he put it on his schedule, so if he's up for it, he'll probably
Okay.
Will probably do it.
And I'll, I'll just double check with Mike and Christine from the town that they're planning on attending as well. Because I'm, I'm out of commission all day for a local event, so I, there's no way I can even make it to a computer. Um, but that's sort of their, it seems like their kickoff to talk about the Sustainable State Community Energy Challenge. So I'm, um, very curious to find out what's kind of, you know, talked about in that meeting to kick things off. I, I, I feel like this will be a great undertaking and is broad enough that there again will be different, you know, areas of interest, but I am still, are, um, uh, I acknowledge the fact that I still am quite I'm, I'm unsure of what this is going to entail. So I'm, I'm, hopefully, maybe John or, or Mike or Christine will be able to kind of fill in afterwards on what, what, what it's all about.
Yep.
Um, the next thing I just wanted to mention is Tula had actually found something, um, that, and I'm going to pull it up. It's called Bay State Textiles, and it's, um, I just wanted to kind of mention it because, uh, Tula had said, oh, this might be interesting because it's, um, uh, textile recycling, and it's an organization that you can have, you know, sort of get involved with that will help facilitate it for your town. And, um, so they said that, um, interestingly enough, our highway foreman recently reached out regard to hosting a bin at the, at our transfer station. So it sounds like Tula found out about it, but then indep, and I reached out to her, but um, in, and independently, um, it sounds like, you know, the town foreman already is working on it. Um, at the moment, we would need to place at least a few bins in North Stonington for their drivers to be able to add the town to their route. Um, so they were saying that they really hope that the public schools can get involved. Um, they see highest collections in towns that have all the schools participating along with the transfer station.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And the program is cost-free to the town, and the schools and or town earns a hundred dollars in rebate dollars for every ton collected. So ton, ton is kind of a lot, but, um, they also cross-brand the bins with town seals, school logos. So residents know they're benefiting the municipality by recycling. So, um, I was planning on reaching, you know, just kind of circling back, um, with, I just got this email back, um, uh, with, to see if like the schools, if there's a way to get the schools involved, because then that could certainly, um, broaden the exposure to it. But it sounds like an interesting program and kind of like there's no, if there's no cost to us, it's sort of a win-win if we can get the schools to be involved and drop off bin. Could be higher.
Does, is there any mention of where everything goes?
Um, yeah, so like, uh, if I can pull up a um, I thought when I remember looking at it, it was, uh, they recycle it and let's see. Thought it gets used for different applications, but you know what? I looked at this a while ago before I emailed her, so, um, uh, clothing, so so I don't get the sense that it's, you know, it's not like if you're trying to give it away for goodwill, but rather like stuff that you were just throwing away in the garbage. Um, what do they do with it? Oh, what do we do? Um, developing country, so exports half of its clothing donations and collections to developing countries. There's a healthy demand for used clothing and shoes from the United States all over the world. Um, textures are primarily, primarily reused as clothing and shoes, providing thousands of jobs for small entrepreneurs, their families and employees. Management team has over, uh, exporting reclaiming reclaimed clothing donations to over fifteen countries worldwide. It doesn't say what the other half goes to, let's see. An expensive alternative for new, for new clothing for many people that live off of a dollar per day. It also has a customer base in the United States. Their customers are called graders. These grader sort the clothing, shoes and household linen into fifty-plus categories of grades. Fifty percent of the material is packed for export as used clothing. The second grade, the wiper grade, consists of material that is absorbent, heavy content, plantall, t-shirts, towels and denim. Items of this grade are all cut into wiping rags and resold to companies through the United States that need wipers to keep their plant and equipment clean. Items of the last grade, fiber material, are shipped to fiber mills and ground down and made into new material. Consumer sees this material and items such as carpet padding, insulation and high-tech building material like tracts. So it sounds like, yeah, there's like
Really everything, like anything, everything in any shape. Yeah, the quote, the quote on the top of this is, don't judge, just donate.
That's funny.
Well, that's cool.
So yeah, I'll, um, about the town. Get the school involved. But I think that's, um, sounds, sounds cool.
Yeah. Depending on how big the bin is and what, you know, like town hall or the library somewhere in town and then schools.
Um, here's where it says the box program. Oh, so it looks like one of these, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
I think I've seen these before. And it's great that it's kind of awareness, the focus on the school box programs, tried to awareness the problem of unwanted textiles.
Yeah, I mean, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even think about not throwing out like raggedy
Right, because you assume that nobody wants, like, if it's not wearable, you just assume.
Great.
That's good. So I'll give you posted on that, but, um, I thought that would be a good thing to work on or just kind of get organized, especially if this is already a program that exists and it's just a matter of trying to get the school on board.
Yeah, yeah.
And no pollinator pathways updates because Pat's not here, so, um, she normally would talk about that. Um, I went out of order, sustainable North Stonington update is the, um, website. So, um, hopefully some new things will be posted on that shortly. Um, I will open it up for public comments from anybody.
Just regarding the poll, um, pollinator pathway thing, Alexis.
Sure, sorry.
No, I just, do you know outside of what Pat's doing with like their process? If there's anything moving along or not moving along with the, um, grant side of it, that?
So my understanding was that, um, they needed to have the bank account established in order to um, have the grant launched. And I got the, I got everything squared away. It was just a matter of having the signers. Like, we got all the documentation that we would need for it and the tax ID number and everything, which I applied for. Um, and it's just the people who are going to be the signers on the account need to just go in and sign the new account documentation. Um, I think Pat was waiting until some people were back from vacation. Um, and I think what she mentioned was that she didn't want to launch the crowdfunding campaign until the spring, like early spring of twenty twenty-two, because she said at this point, um, it's sort of like he's going to be, you know, it's kind of late to plant now. Um, so we can kind of think of it as planting pollinators, fundraising to plant pollinators um, and be, and garner attention for the program in the spring.
Right.
So I think she wanted to kind of hold off.
Cool, I think it sounds like a plan.
Did you have anything that you were, um, that vested interest in, in it being, uh, done differently?
No, 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 I was just, I was just curious. I just, I've been spreading some, uh, perennial seeds around the yard.
Oh, nice.
And I was just thinking about it.
It's funny, I, everybody I've talked to, which is such a great thing, some people complain, but everybody said, oh my gosh, the bees this year have been like, never seen such a population of bees. Um, I was at Clyde's, uh, with some friends the other day, um, who were out of town. And they were like, we had bees all over the place. And I was saying, oh, it looks like the bee population is anecdotally healthy, which was very reassuring. Um, who knows if that's kind of on a global basis, but seems like here it's healthy.
Good.
Um, anything else? Sorry, yep.
Did they say what kind of bees? Because the, the bumblebees have been, um, in, in a good number, but I only saw one honeybee all year.
Oh, really? Oh, no.
Yes.
Oh dear, I, I, um, I have some, oh gosh, they're, they might be called like lace hydrangea or something like that. I don't know the exact name, but I'm, I should. Right outside my office window, my home office window, and I saw regular bees on them all summer long. They were very, very happy, not just the bumblebees. So I was, um, encouraged by that. Um, and at Clyde's, they were, I think, honeybees. They, they weren't lost or yellow jackets or anything like that. And they, they definitely weren't bumblebees, but, um, oh, that's disappointing that you didn't see any honeybees. Okay, Craig, anything else, uh, before I open it for public comment?
Uh, no, no, that's, that's good on me.
Okay, anybody from the group one is, ask a question or say anything?
Do you have, uh, someone who does your social media? You do not.
I do not.
Because I, I'd be interested. I saw that you had a link on your, our future webpage.
Yes.
It says it's mostly theoretical at this point.
Yes. I am very bad at social media, so anybody who is better versed at it than I would be much appreciated. Never on it. Are, are you, is that a specialty of yours, Casey?
Um, I wonder, I don't know if it'd be a specialty, but I did, I did social media for the volunteer group I was in, in UConn, in the, in stores. And then I was at a web marketing website, but you know, so I have some um, experience outside of just personal, is what I'm trying to say.
Oh, that's awesome. That's great, because I feel like, um, to your point, if we had, uh, if we kind of parlayed our site in, you know, had some kind of duplicative content where some things like, let's say, the article Craig, that you were mentioning, things like that, where it's just news or interesting tidbits that we come across that are related to sustainability. Um, we might reach a broader audience with social media and, you know, kind of promoting what we're doing too. Um, than just with the site itself, uh, because people may not be paying attention as much to the site. Or we could drive them to the site from a social media post. So gosh, if we could have a social media presence for the sustainability committee, that would be awesome. Like, I, I don't see a reason not, not to. I think that'd be great.
Yeah. Good.
Have them social media, deer and head life syndrome.
I think, I think it would be a safe place to deal with sustainable, and people's interested in sustainability. I think I can handle those people.
Yeah, I feel like it's not going to be, that was, that was the interesting thing. I remember, um, joining a couple. Maybe it was a selectmen meeting or, you know, different things like that. And I was talking to Mike, you know, Che, his hair, that I'm going to get a lot of pushback or things like that. And he was like, no, it's kind of a very, just good, you know, it was not like we're doing anything controversial, just doing things that are good for the town. So, yeah, hopefully you wouldn't get. Hopefully you wouldn't get many problems.
Right.
Okay, well, it is eight o'clock and I have recently been trying to make an effort to give it to the allotted hour. So um, unless anybody else has anything they would like to add, I will motion to adjourn.
Um, is, our next meeting is scheduled for two weeks from today, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, does that work for you?
Yes.
Be good to have it, especially considering everybody's been.
Yeah, yeah, and I think doing like that builds momentum and then we can see, I mean, we can certainly keep it, I'm not opposed to keeping it at two weeks. I like the idea of, of having something regular though, so if we do that at four weeks and then we can add the other ones even every time. But just so we have that, that stability, that framework around us.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Great.
Right.
Okay, do you second my motion?
Oh, I do, I do in fact second your motion. All right, I'm the only one that can do that, second then.
Thank you. I hope you have a good evening.
You as well.
So let my angry dogs inside.
Yeah, have a great night, thanks so much.
You, thanks for joining, Casey.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Bye, have a good night.
Bye.
Thanks.